Welcome, everybody. We will call to order the Grand Forks City Council, special city council meeting, Monday, October 24, 2022. Roll call, please, Maureen.
Weigel. Wasowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
We have form.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item 2, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinances. Just have the 1.
2.1, Public Hearing on Appeals, Certified Special Assessments and Approved Findings for Project Number 7539, District Number 737, Paving and Streetlights for Oscarville.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Could you, yeah, thank you. Give us some insight on this project and where it's at, Mr. Lieberman? And then I think we got a couple other that we're going to help out. So, please, Mr. Lieberman.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Boczynski, and council members. I thought I'd take a few minutes and maybe provide some background on this project and walk through the timeline, so for the benefit of the new council members and maybe those who weren't here when we started this process and this project over two years ago. So, the Oscarville Industrial Park was annexed to the city probably 20 or 30 years ago, but it wasn't until 2015 when we actually started to install infrastructure. The city participated, cost participated in that with the installation of storm and sanitary sewers, stormwater pond, other paving projects. And the city participated in the amount of roughly $1.7 million over the course of those projects. Those projects demonstrated the unique nature of Oscarville Industrial Park and some of the challenges we have with infill work when we're installing utilities after the facilities are in place and after established driving aprons and such are already in place. So, tonight, we're talking about the last phase of the Oscarville infrastructure development. That is Project 7539, the paving of Oscarville. This consisted of the replacement of a rural gravel section with ditching for stormwater and replacing that with a two-lane concrete urban roadway with curb and gutter, berms, driveway approaches, streetlights, everything you would expect of an urban road. The timeline began about January of 2021, when council approved the engineers' reports, created the assessment districts, and directed that plans and specifications be developed. I'll pull up the district map here so you can see. These are the affected streets in Oscarville.
Mr. Lieberman, just for the record show, Mr. Weigel has attended. He's here, so hasn't arrived. Thank you. Continue.
The map here, the dash lines reflect the streets that were paved under this project. Technically, all of these streets are local streets, and by city cost share policy, these are 100% special assessed to the benefiting properties. However, 27th Avenue and 24th Avenue were reviewed, and because they function as collector streets, we actually treated them as classified roadways. That's important because there's an 80/20 cost share for new construction of classified roadways, and that amounted to essentially an $800,000 participation by the city in the cost of this project. About later in January 2021, the Special Assessment Commission met. They applied the written policy for assigning benefits to the properties involved in this district. From my perspective, this was pretty routine. Paving projects are pretty routine. There was nothing unique about this one. And the end product was two benefit maps, one for the local roadways, one for the classified roadways. And I do have those queued up if you'd like to see them, but I'll skip that unless there's a desire by council to do so. So, following the assessment commission meeting, the finance department mailed the first set of letters to the property owners. That gives them, gave them a range of what they could expect the project to cost. It's just a preliminary estimate at this point, and it's a somewhat wider range. But based on those letters, the city staff received feedback that the costs for this project were going to be too high, that is financially going to negatively impact these property owners. So, we held two public input meetings, February 18 and March 2 of 2021. I believe Councilmember Weber was participated in those, if I recall. And at those meetings, we discussed a number of options to make this project more financially viable for the property owners. In the end, the general consensus was met that we would keep the 80/20 cost share for the classified roadways, and we would add an additional 40/60 cost share for the local streets. That would be 40% city cost, 60% special assessed to the benefiting properties. So, in all, the city cost share went from 0 to $800,000 to $2.1 million over the course of the action here. And that amounts to just roughly a 50/50 cost share. If you take it in some, it's roughly 50% city, 50% property owners. So, at this point, engineering completed their design in accordance with city standards. It was stamped by a professional engineer certified, and council approved us to advertise for bids. We received five bids. The low bid was Strata Corporation for 3.9 million approximately, and that was 7.3% under the engineer's estimate. Of note, there was one protest. That was by Red River Archers. We did not receive any protest from Mr. Senske. So, in the timeline, I'm going to fast forward to the construction of the project. September 2021, about midway through construction, Mr. Senske did approach city staff. He had concerns about the grade on the driveway approaches to his properties. Specifically, it was too steep for some of the unique trucks and trailers that he has that wouldn't be considered normal vehicles. So, city staff worked to accommodate his request. We essentially worked to raise the elevation of the road a few inches, and that would flatten out his driveways, accommodate him a little more. And that resulted in a contract change order of roughly $27,000, of which the city would pay a portion of that, roughly 50%. So, overall, that's a 0.7% increase in the cost of the project. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Lieberman? No. President Sandy, please.
Mr. Lieberman, I'm sorry. On that change order, so if the city picked up half, the other half got special assessed across the entire special assessment district, correct?
That's correct.
It wasn't just to the benefiting property.
That's correct.
It went to the, thank you very much.
Sandy.
Thank you. Up, Sam, you got something else to add, please?
Yes. So, I just have a summary, kind of, of all Mr. Senske's lots and what he received, what cost range he received for each letter that we send out. So, we send out the engineer estimate letter, which was just the standard 80/20 cost share. So, that was the range that he was given for each of his lots that he owned at that time. The bid letters that went out, went out after the city contributed more money to the project. So, that included the 80/20 cost share and the 60/40. And then, so you can see that the cost range is significantly less. And then the final assessment, which in total was within the cost or the bid range that we sent out. And there were a couple lots that were sold within that timeframe. And then we just have copies of a couple of the letters or a letter for one of his lots, so you can just see what type, what it was sent out. We just picked one of his, one of his larger lots. So, this would have been the engineer estimate letter and the bid letter where it was given. There was still protest period left when this went out, so that date was on there. And then the final assessment letter, which had the stub on the bottom for them to pay, just for an example of what he was receiving. Anybody have any questions on that?
No. All right. Do we have, Mr. Johnson, are you here to represent Mr. Senske?
I am.
Please, step up here, sir. We got, we do have your letter filed, and we have that in all our possessions, and it's attached to the agenda item as well. So, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first, I'd just like to thank you for continuing this so that I could be here and say my piece, and that you didn't just call it on the last Monday. It's very much appreciated. I know everyone's busy and has a lot of things going on. What I, I think the major crux that I am hearing and have really felt since the last time we met is there's a lot of talk about the cost. And so, we have the cost to this person, the cost to that person, how much collectively as a city, a cost is being input into these certain projects. And that's fine. I mean, I received the spreadsheet from the city, and I would probably have to charge Mr. Senske another $117,000 just to figure the whole thing out. You know, I didn't get all the formulas. City engineering did a, you know, a very good cost analysis. They broke down what numbers there are, and then they took a lot and they decided, you know, purportedly according to the manual, what cost should then go and, you know, what a drainage would indicate. And that's all fine. I mean, at some point, it's dollars and cents. Everybody understands that. You don't get anything for nothing, and you don't function on nothing. The city can't just print money. But what I have failed to hear through all of this is the benefit. So, what is the benefit? Now, when I look at a city and I come to a city, I say, "I'm going to be protected by the police." And that's a benefit. You know, it's hard to put a dollar amount on what is that benefit when I can pick up the phone and say, you know, somebody's pounding on my door, and I don't need to have a deputy coming from Laramore or, or, you know, something else. If there's, there's a police force here, it adds protection, there's a fire department here. These are things that we spend money. There are schools here, and there's a little different analysis there. I understand that for deciding what, what tax base is going to go for the benefit of someone else's children. And then those someone else's children's parents paid to benefit my children, and it goes on and on and on. And so, when I look at legislative dictate that says the Special Assessment Commission needs to look at a project and determine a benefit, I don't see that as a cost analysis. I don't see that as engineering sends over a spreadsheet and says, "Well, we spent $20 million, and we have to recoup half of that in this particular case." Storm sewer is about the same. No, no person, especially Mr. Senske, is upset with the city. You know, he's been here for a long time and has seen his property out there fall behind because some of these things hadn't been done, and now they're getting done. So, it isn't like he doesn't want service, and it isn't like he hasn't been paying the elevated tax for coming into the city for a long time. And we all have tensions. I understand the city has to make a good on what, what is being spent. You're all like it, and you all have to go back to your contingents and say, you know, we're running the city in a tight ship manner. We're making good use of our dollars. But some of this, I think, needs to be looked at from the vein of, okay, here we are, we're now in the city. There are some things that are expected to be provided by the city, and sometimes that just can't be what is the cost of it. And we have this manual. If you read the manual, there are places in where it's suggested. I mean, it's, it's not at 100% that we're going to say a commercial property has a 1 and a residential has a .5. You know, it's supposed to be looked at to say, okay, what are we really trying to accomplish here, and what are we accomplishing, irrespective of the money first? Then, we all have to circle back around. But what I'm saying, especially in this case, we had these projects that, that cost more money, but we really didn't get any more benefit to those people for doing that project. We just paid a lot more money. And there are some reasons for that, I understand. But if you take a look at doing the cost analysis, then the other side of that is, if you're going to do a project that puts such a burden on the landlord, you've now created a situation where their land is not worth, in this particular case, and as I put in my letter, you know, the storm sewer wasn't something that you could protest. It was understanding part of what the city's bigger plan was. Mr. Senske wasn't necessarily opposed to that. But now we've got it at 80% of just the land, it was 26%, 28% of all the things that he's put into that land, all of the maintenance he's had to do to that land. And it's now, if we put this assessment on that land, it's going to basically be as much assessed as everything that he's put into that property or what the appraisal says, the city appraised it. So, that's where I think this needs to go back to the Special Assessment Commission and say, okay, put a number on the benefit. You know, it's, it isn't going to be an arguable thing very likely if we go back up again because there's great deference given to that institution. It's there by statute to make sure that they consider it, they ponder it, and say, well, in this case, you know, they're probably not getting that much benefit, so we need to make something else work. That's going to put a, probably a little bit of a problem onto this body, but Special Assessment Commission by statute is the commission that sets it. You then can say yea or nay, and I suppose go back again, and we can all move back and forth. But if the benefit of $171,000 on the piece of property that I picked, which is their shop, office, the parking lot, and then the big semi-parking lot, puts it at a priety with the actual value, I'm not seeing a calculation that shows that that benefit is any greater than, you know, you pave, as Mr. Lieberman said. This is a pretty much just a straight up and down paving job. So, somebody on South End gets X benefit, somebody on the East Side, there is no, there's no difference. But I don't see that calculation starting out and then it moved from there. All I see is that engineering, which is what they're supposed to do, helped them, but they sent over a cost analysis that says, this is how much money it is, and if we use this formula, this is how much we're going to assess here. And then they, they didn't even debate it. Mr. Senske showed up at the meeting to discuss it, as he was invited to do, and they said, "Well, you'll have to go talk to the city engineering. We don't make any of those determinations," and that's just not correct. It's, it's that body that's supposed to be making the determination if they need to get some more evidence on, you know, is that a benefit to Mr. Senske? I guess no one else brought forward a letter or anything, so I guess it would be just asked to him, but is it, is it a benefit to this road and the amount of $171,000 for that 500 feet or 1,000 feet, whatever it is there? And that, I think, is where we run off the rails and why I'm coming back to you again to say, you know, we really need to get in line with the statute and make this determination and then go from there if there has to be some other inputs to make up the money or is there just no money? You know, that, that's a tougher question. I'll give you that. But at, at the point of determining what the benefit is, I don't see that it, it is something that should first be dependent on cost. And this is unique. Everyone has come to you every time, saying this is so unique. You know, it was developed pre-sanitary sewer, pre-storm sewer, pre-paving, so that made it harder. But I'm just failing to see where the benefit then is, is calculated on just because it's a difficult project or because of this or that. And that's really what I would like the city council and Mr. Mayor to consider. Send it back down. Let's get some real, real numbers on what is a benefit. It should be the same for everybody in the city to start with. It should cost or a benefit equaling whatever. And then from there, are there some other issues that need to be debated and decided? And I think once that's done, you know, whether somebody feels it's fair or unfair, at least you know, at least you know that somebody developing in this part of town is going to first, that, that cost. Everybody's on level ground. And then, you know, if there's something, you know, inflation, it's going to be a problem now, probably stay inflation if that happens. But that's, that's my request to city council, that you not accept the Special Assessment Commission's failure to do the analysis required by law, separate from the money. You know, at this point, the money piece isn't, isn't the big part of the argument. It's, it's the end hurt of the argument. But I would like to see some more analysis. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Would you, if there's any questions from council, would you be willing to take them? Mr. Goss, have you got, yeah, feel free, please.
I do have a couple, Mr. Johnson. I just want to make sure I understand where the council understands. Your, is I, the, the contention isn't that they didn't follow the special assessment policy, correct?
The statute.
The, but the, but the Special Assessment Commission followed the policy for special assessments. Is that correct?
Well, we don't know that because they simply said, "City council sent us the number. We're, we're taking that number and moving forward." There wasn't any analysis done. There wasn't a benefit found. And I, if I'm reading further into your question, which is probably a dangerous thing, but what you're asking me is, the special assessment manual was followed, per se.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah. I don't, I don't believe it was because I believe within the manual, it gives the Special Assessment Commission, well, number one, they don't have to follow it, period. But number two, there are times when you need to vary with certain situations, and the manual specifically sets out some of those, like with the church, is it, is it appropriate to give them a full 1? Or, you know, it doesn't limit the Special Assessment Commission's ability because you can't by statute. And in this case, they did not follow it, is my position.
And, and the reason they didn't follow it is why?
My understanding of the reason they didn't follow it is they simply were, were sending through what city engineering had given them in the form of the assessment per parcel.
Okay. Any other reason other than that?
Well, they, they did not take any input into what the benefit may be. They wouldn't listen to Mr. Senske. There wasn't any analysis done on why, if, if they claimed to be following the Special Assessment handbook, why did they choose to follow it in this particular case when everyone has agreed numerous times that this is a special situation? This isn't a normal course of action. And so, it would seem to me that people would say, well, okay, something is different here. We should probably look at that. When, when every professional that we have talked to on both sides of the situation have said, this is a, this probably won't happen again in Grand Forks, I don't know if they went that far. You know, there aren't that, these kind of developments left anymore that are going to go through this process in this compressed piece of time.
So, what, what method would be used then, other than the, or the discretion of the commission?
So, if you look at, at Bateman, the Special Assessment Commission actually went through and ran a bunch of different possibilities in determining what the best benefit or what the benefit would be, and then made a determination after putting a lot of work in and discussing and trying to figure out many different ways of assessing it because, in that case, as you know, it was future assessment was the big issue. It was farm field at that particular time. The city was coming in with the improvements. And so, the Special Assessment Commission did a lot of work to determine what's fair. They talked to people. They, they did their best to make the benefit determined. And, and I think that's something that should be done here because there, there could be with discussion rather than taking what's sent to you, the idea that, so we've got roughly $600,000, $700,000 already on this one parcel of land that I've brought as an example, is another 171. I mean, where's the benefit there? That, and they didn't do that. They just simply adopted a cost analysis, which isn't a benefit. A cost analysis is simply taking the cost of the project and dividing it out. I mean, that's, that's not equating to a benefit. I mean, we unfortunately came to start using that analysis in Supreme Court as, as we went with that. But I think that may be changing as the, the rubber, I, I know some of the fellows on that commission, I like them all, but they didn't do what they should have done. They simply accepted and sent through. So, I don't think that's appropriate or proper.
Is, and, and my last question is, is the special assessment in order for this benefit, there should be some increase in the value of the property as a result of the project?
I don't think benefit necessarily equates to dollars on, I don't think for cost or for benefit. You know, I, I certainly am not seeing that property moving up in cost, the million dollars roughly that is being assessed against it. Looks like it's went up with the cost of land in general, the 100, 150, 200,000. And it, it indicates to me that the assessor actually appraised it. They didn't just use a formula, at least that's what it says on their site. So, if you're asking me from a cost analysis, as a business person, would it be a good idea to put a million dollars into something that's going to appreciate 200? You probably wouldn't do it. But there's a lot of things going on here. Mr. Senske, that's his baby. I mean, he is not, he could have stopped this project. That, that's true. But he didn't. So, he wants what is good for everybody. He wants people to be able to drive out there and not get stuck and not, you know, be looking at water and ditches and never per se smell. But, you know, it's a different, it's a different thing. But at the same time, you don't want to be getting so hit that it, it makes it impossible, probably, we don't know. He's not trying to sell that particular lap. But at some point, somebody's going to say, well, you want this, and I'm going to pay special assessments that I can't even expense. I can take the depreciation over 25 years, even if you pay them upfront, you don't, you don't get the benefit of spending that money. So, it's a tough, it's a tough spot for them. It's a tough spot for you guys. But I think that if we look at the statute, follow the statute, and we come to the same result, then we come to the same result. But I, I think there may be a different result, and I certainly think the facts here support a different result. And we have this one last 1 that could be adjusted to make it the benefit right. And that's what we're asking this body to, to man.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
Thanks again.
All right. I'll leave it to city council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. President Sandy, please.
If I'm wrong, although your tenure here hasn't been, isn't that long, there are people here that have been around longer. Don't we, don't we always special assess based upon financial, the financial cost of the project per square foot? That's the way we do it. That's the way we've always done it, correct? Mr. Goss, then?
I believe that's correct. And maybe this is a tie-in to, just to give the, some of the new council members an idea as to what you're supposed to look at with respect to a special assessment. The North Dakota Supreme Court, and this is- upon financial, the financial cost of the project, um, per square foot? That's the way we do it. That's the way we've always done it, correct? Mr. Grasser?
I believe that's correct. And maybe this is a tie into, just to give the, some of the new council members an idea as to what you're supposed to look at with respect to a special assessment. Um, the North Dakota Supreme Court, um, and this is in the case, it's Hector, it's, it's at 2012 North Dakota 80, talks about that you start with the presumption that the special assessments are valid. The party challenging them has the burden of proving they're invalid. Um, the, uh, as I understand, at least the letter that was presented is that the costs increased with there's, with respect to this particular project. That Hector case talked about that in, in the sense that in that case, there is a challenge of the costs weren't in the engineer's estimate, or the amount assessed was more than what was in the engineer's estimate. Um, and the North Dakota Supreme Court has said those are estimates only. Costs can increase with respect to the assessment, it doesn't make the assessment invalid. Um, also in that, in that Hector case, it talks about that, uh, the commission has broad, has broad discretion on the method to use as far as special assessments are concerned. Um, there's no precise formula to quantify the benefits. Uh, but also said that when the formula is used, like in the, in this particular case where this policy exists, is, is, uh, President Sandy has, uh, noted that when you apply that principle or those policies, they're generally upheld. One of the things that Mr. Johnston also mentioned is about the benefits not being there. Uh, there's a case, it's Hayman versus City of Surrey, it's 418 Northwest Second and 605, and it's decided back in 1988. The North Dakota Supreme Court said, benefits to be derived from a special assessment are ordinarily not instant upon the inception or completion of the improvement, but materialize with the development in the, in the future. Um, they are nonetheless benefits because their full fruition is postponed or because the present use to which the property is devoted is not, not of a character to be materially affected by the improvement. Um, as far as the, the contention about, and I think he, he, in his letter, he provided, um, valuation comparison, the assessed value versus the, um, the assessments. The North Dakota Supreme Court has rejected that, that analysis. It's a Sioux line case dating back to 1969, uh, where special assessments, the argument was special assessments, uh, can't be imposed unless there's showing a market value advanced or the market value increased because of the project. The North Dakota Supreme Court has rejected that notion. Uh, so as I understand, the, the, um, the project cost more, the one particular item was this, um, uh, something that Mr. Sensky requested because of some equipment, some specialized use of equipment. That was done, it increased the cost, I think I heard about $24,000, which is all then specially assessed to everybody. Um, I believe that the special assessment commission, as was announced, applied the policy, uh, for special assessments, applied it correctly. And, and, um, I think that, that, uh, there's a basis to uphold, uh, the special assessment, uh, by the special assessment commission for this property.
That answer your question, President Sandy? I guess I got one question and maybe Mr. Johnson could answer this. If the, we went back to the special assessment, uh, commission and they came back and said the benefit is greater, is Mr. Sensky willing to pay, uh, a larger portion?
Thank you. Uh, statute caps it at actual cost. So if it did determine that the, uh, the benefit was greater than, uh, there would not be the ability of the city to assess more than what, uh, they actually had expected.
Okay. President Sandy, sorry, did you have another?
I think, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, based upon city policy, um, we should approve the findings by the special assessment committee and certify the special assessments for project 7539, District 737. So that's my motion, Mayor.
All right. We got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? A second, uh, motion, President Sandy, second from Vice President Weber. Any further discussion on the item? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Got him, yeah. Item three adjourned, we got a motion. Do we have a second? Second from Ms. Osowski, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned for the special city council meeting.
Yeah, they don't want to hear what we have to say. They don't want to hear.
Let's roll. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for October 24th, 2022. Under item one, call to order, 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
All present, we have a call.
Great. Thank you. Under item 2.1, reappointment of Sean Clapp to the visitors, uh, visit Greater Grand Forks Board. Any comments?
Move to approve.
By Weber, is there a second? By Cavami? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2, plans and specs for projects 8559, 8560, 61, 62, and 63, District 591, 356, 592, 767, and 593. Sanitary, water main, storm, paving, streetlights, Southern Estates 9th, Phase 2, South 30th Street, box culvert in South End Drainway. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy. Uh, this project, uh, benefits the Southern Estates 9th, 93 subdivision with the construction of sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, paving, streetlights, and a box culvert crossing of the South End Drainway. Uh, this project previously met the council on August 15th, where the assessment district was, districts were created, engineers' reports were approved, and a task order with Houston Engineering was approved, uh, to begin the design. Uh, since that meeting, engineering and Houston Engineering have, uh, worked on the design. We're in our final review of it and, uh, we are recommending it for approval of plans and specifications. The current cost estimate is in line with the engineer's report at 2.57 million dollars. Um, the city cost share for the box culvert is 50%, uh, which is estimated to be roughly $301,000, uh, which, uh, will be paid out of the street and infrastructure fund, 4815. Uh, with that, um, the, uh, staff recommends approval of plans and specs and directing the engineering department to advertise for bids.
Can you, Mr. Grasser, something to add, sir?
Maybe a motion and a second, if I can check after that.
Great. Any, uh, any comments? Moved by Veen, second by Cavami? Any other comments? Mr. Grasser, you wanted to?
Thank you. I don't know if this is the right place exactly, but, um, this is, this is a project that has special assessments associated with them, and I wanted to kind of walk through the more general, the high altitude discussion about how special assessments work and the commission, et cetera. Um, if you remember here, a few weeks ago, we created a district for this particular project. And, and similarly to what you, you've seen on, on the other special assessment, uh, projects, there's a boundary around, around an area. That's the area that the, the city council basically, per engineering recommendation, assigns the benefits to. So you're looking at the project, if it's a paving or something, you're looking at getting the adjacent properties, they're the ones that are going to be benefiting from it. There's, there's a couple of different steps in here. The city council establishes a district which says, this is the area that, that, that the benefits are going to apply to. The special assessment commission, under a separate hat and legislative authority, basically assigns benefits. And so again, that's what this, this process is, is doing. We, we set the benefits, um, or we set the boundaries. Again, Ben, as part of the engineer's report, if you remember, there's, there's a cost. So the cost component of this thing comes in after the special, the special assessment commission really assigns benefits. If you look at our, our special assessment process, there's a, part of the document talks about how we would normally assign benefits. The benefit in, in very generic terms, a lot of times has to do with the size of the project. If you're fronting on the project and right next to the project, you get a higher benefit than if you're, you're a property that's maybe not adjacent to the street, they'll get a lesser benefit. But there may still be a benefit because you may need that street to get back to that property. The mechanics of it are very, very complicated, but the assessment commission essentially assigns benefits. Then when they, they take those benefits on each individual property, there's a separate calculation that brings the dollar amount into it. Of course, the dollar amount is usually what people are, are, are interested in, and they're, those are the things that people are used to seeing. So most of the time, what comes out in the, in the letters and stuff is actually the dollar amount. But it's derived from the benefits that were created or determined by the special assessment commission. So I wanted to just talk about it in general terms because these are, some of these processes are separated and, you know, separate and distinct from each other. So again, city council sets the benefiting area, the special assessment commission can't assign benefits outside of that area. Then the special assessment commission assigns benefits. And the city council doesn't determine benefits. We may determine a cost share, which then goes back into that calculation, but that's separate from the benefits.
And, and Mr. Grasser, there's a reason why the special assessment commission is made up of citizens of the city of Grand Forks, specifically for this reason, to keep it non-political.
That's the idea, a separate body.
Mr. Weber?
And we've just had a discussion about, uh, benefits or costs. And when you're using the term benefit now, that is to, used to determine which property owners are going to be benefiting from the project. Benefits are not what then determines the amount to be assessed. The benefit is just used to determine who's going to be assessed. Is that correct? And then the assessment is not based on any kind of dollar amount for benefit, the assessment is based on the cost of the project.
If, if I can maybe give an, an example, rough example. Um, again, size, size matters on lots. If you have a hundred-foot lot and a, and a thousand-foot lot, the thousand-foot lot is basically going to receive a higher benefit that, you know, they'll have a, a benefit for fronting the property, right? And so a hundred-foot lot will have, I'll just call it 100, and the thousand will have a thousand. A lot that's much deeper than a smaller lot may get an extra benefit because the lot is so large and deep. So those go into, so a, a certain property, again, may have that benefit calculation, that's a benefit from the project. That's not the benefit related to necessarily the property value. That benefit calculation, though, gets tied back into the, into the cost of the project. The cost essentially gets multiplied by the, by each individual benefit to come up with the individual property owner's benefit.
And if I live on the other side of town, I may in some way benefit from this, but, but my amount of benefit is, is irrelevant to this because a district is determined to have the most direct benefit.
Correct. That's the way we basically set it up, is, is the benefiting areas are always identified within a certain boundary in that. So, you know, actually, and, and aside, you know, City of Bismarck has been toying with the, the idea here for several years about trying to come up with a street utility, trying to figure out, how do you do that, uh, that kind of a calculation on a citywide basis when you've got people at totally different ends of town? The street sizes might be different, the costs are different, the needs are different, the requests for special enhancements might be different. The best way to do that is to contain that within that benefiting area. And then when we go, we get like the public input, we'll, we'll determine, um, you know, the particulars of the type of the street.
This is perhaps just semantics and I'll, I'll drop it soon, but let me try one more time. If, if I have a sidewalk being put in front of my home, um, the, the benefit is maintaining my property, um, uh, providing access for pedestrians who are going to walk by, the, the benefit is not some dollar amount that gets added to the property, uh, to the value of my property. We're using benefit in a very different way here, right?
Right. It's not, it's not a one-to-one value to the property.
Right.
Yeah. We don't, the state statutes, I don't believe, operate that way.
Right. And ultimately, the assessment is based on, we, we've determined an equation for benefit, um, and that's the, the portion that a person is going to pay of the total cost, their share of that total cost. It has nothing to do with, um, some calculation of the dollar amount of the benefit.
Correct. The dollar gets imported into the benefit calculation.
Very good. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Grasser?
I'll move approval.
Did we already have a motion and a second? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item 2.3, plans and specs for project 8359, urban, urban traffic signal rehabilitation. Good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this project here is one that's actually been in front of council a couple of times, but it's been a little while. So just a quick rehash, this is a rehabilitation project for the signal systems at about 12 different intersections across town. It's projected to utilize about 2.36 million dollars of federal funding through the urban grant, or the urban road program. Um, the rehabilitation techniques can range from anything, anything from like sandblasting and painting the pole, new signal heads, new wiring, new conduit, just essentially doing some work on some of these older signals in town. And one of the signals is actually projected to get a full replacement. So we're going to take everything out and put all new equipment back in. Um, right now, we're at the point of working on plans and specs, we're just about to finish those up. We're noticing that costs now are looking quite a bit higher than they were when we originally programmed this project. So we're planning to bid this project a little bit more uniquely. We're going to bid it with a base bid where we bid 10 of these 12 signaled intersections, and then there will be an alternate where we have the other two included. So we'll get a chance to see some of the costs. If they look in favor, we can award all 12. If they look high like we think they're going to, we have the option to just award 10 of them, and then we can come back and get those other two with a, a future project. So right now, we're just looking to approve plans and specifications for the project and then authorize staff to direct the NDDOT to advertise for bids in February.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Danielson? Moved by Cavami, second by Veen. Question?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.4, bid award for project 8243, North Fifth Street, Gateway to Demure's chip seal. Mr. Danielson?
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this is a chip seal project on North Fifth Street from Second Avenue North, just behind Central here, all the way up to Gateway Drive. It is a project that's being managed and administered by the NDDOT. Um, it's being funded with some COVID money that they had sitting around, about $80,000 of COVID money. And then they are now at the point of opening bids. They had bids on October 14th, and the project was actually packaged with two other projects, but the only piece that really involves the city is this North Fifth Street piece. Um, we would be cost sharing and then doing maintenance on just that piece, but these other two were combined for convenience. Um, there were two bidders on the project. The low bid came in from Asphalt Surface Technologies in the amount of 673,024.72. This is a contractor that's done similar work in the city, so we're familiar with them, should be more than capable to do the work. Um, we will only be responsible for 10% of the North Fifth Street portion of the project after that $80,000 of COVID money gets applied. So our share is actually only projected to be about $9,000. So pretty low investment for the city for a good project to do some maintenance on the roads.
Great. Any questions? Comments? Moved by Osowski, is there a second? By Lunskey, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Last but not least, 2, 2.5, change order for project 874, flashing school beacons. Mr. Danielson?
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So this last one here is another project that's been before you a couple of times, but, uh, the project consists of updating some of the electrical equipment at our school flashing beacon crossings. We've got signalized crossings for the schools, and this project was going in, updating some of the hardware on those and realigning some of those beacons so that they're a little bit safer to use. This project was actually constructed this year during the summer, and during the project, we ran into an issue where the existing fiber on the project was expected to be set up so that we could just plug it into the new system and go, but we actually had to do a, a little bit of additional work to make sure that the ends of those fibers were set up to be able to plug into the systems and utilize. So we had to work out a, we had to negotiate with the contractor to get a price to do this additional work. We ended up settling with them to just split it 50/50. The city would take half of this change order and contractor would take half of it. So we negotiated a pretty good deal on that end, and the cost of the change order is pretty competitive, actually, with some other numbers we're seeing in town. Uh, this change order is in front of you because we had some other change orders that brought us pretty close to the city engineer's authority, but this one is actually going to send us over, so it needs council approval. Um, this change order is $33,240.95, and we are looking for approval on that change order, any necessary budget amendments, and then resetting the city engineer's authority on the project.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions about the project? Comments? Moved by Veen, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Danielson? Item 2.6, Legislative Priorities. Mr. Phelan, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Weber.
Thank you, President Sandy. In anticipation of the legislative session every other year, the city puts together a list of legislative priorities. That list of priorities is produced through a consultation with the department heads who constitute the city's legislative committee. Those priorities then come to the Committee of the Whole for introduction and then approval by the council. On October 17th, the Legislative Committee met to review our priorities, most of which are identical to what we'd had last session with some additions and updates, which will be discussed this evening. The intention is for us to first consider these this evening and then to take a vote at our next council meeting. Once the election is conducted and we know who our legislative delegation is, we will then meet with our legislative delegation to make them aware of our priorities and to consult with them on on strategy. That's overall the the process. Mr. Phelan, if you'd like to walk us through the priorities.
I will. Thank you, Council Vice President Weber. On the, one of the attachments, I'll just summarize, and as Mr. Weber said, most of these have been carried over, but I think the good news is that we're further ahead than we were two years ago on these. Under infrastructure and transportation, on the Prairie Dog infrastructure funding, and we've talked about this a lot, this was created a few sessions ago, and this was created so that the non-oil-related cities and counties could benefit from some of the oil revenues. And so we're anticipating receiving the full 12 and 1/2 million. We usually get it in two chunks, a 2 and 1/2 million dollar chunk and then a about a $10 million chunk. We think we're going to get that before the end of the year this year, and obviously a lot of things went on in the our geopolitical world to help make that happen from a price of oil and that sort of thing. The one thing we are, in this Prairie Dog, we can spend it generally, what we would spend it on is water-related activities, infrastructure, and also transportation, and that's where our focus has been with the Prairie Dog funds. The one thing we are asking, at the end of the last session, cities got moved to after what they call the CIF bucket, which is the State Strategic Infrastructure Fund, and that's kind of their large piggy bank, that they can, they have lots of opportunities to do various investments. And so what happened, and that's a large bucket, so if you look at where the city's bucket, we were before this $400 million bucket called CIF, and then at the end of the last session, the state moved us behind the CIF bucket. So what we're asked, we're going to ask for, we're going to work with the North Dakota League of Cities, because our our colleagues across the state concur with this, is ask the state of North Dakota to move us back to before the CIF bucket, and that'll better assure that we will get our our full allotment of funds. And I think this is a good year to ask for it because all the, all the buckets for the state of North Dakota are overflowing right now. So we are going to ask that, but we're going to work with our colleagues across the state on that. The North Dakota Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund, that is, we have benefited from that, and that's through the Bank of North Dakota. So the Bank of North Dakota offers 2%, up to 30% loans through this fund, and we can, and similar to the Prairie Dog, this is meant as a complementary fund, we can use those funds for water and transportation-type projects. And so the benefit of these funds are, is that they're only state and local funds, they're not a lot of the, like, you hear a lot about the state revolving loan funds, those are EPA pass-through loans to the Department of Environmental Quality, and they have some federal strings. These are really state-local funds. Right now, our limit is at, we have, we're at our max of 15. The last session, they raised it another 25 million, and so we still haven't expended that 25 million. I think that additional 25 million right now, we've been in front of you with a lot of water, wastewater, stormwater funds, and we've used the SRF program for that, because that's where the state wants to gear you towards those funds. But we're really going to target our remaining $25 million increment likely for one of these transportation projects that are coming forward. And so we're going to reserve those, and even in this session, we want the state to continue that program, obviously, and even if they can expand the limit on some of those, those are going to be a big deal for our final projects, which are the Demers 42nd Avenue, great separation, and the 47th Avenue interchange. Those are two high priorities, and I think the really great benefit of that is that we're working with all the partners that we need to, from the North Dakota DOT to BNSF, and and really, we're partnering on getting those projects environmental-ready so that we can design and bid and fund those projects. So really, we're in pretty good shape on all those, so that's those projects. The the water-related projects we talked about, we had the folks here a few weeks ago from the talk from Garrison to Virgin Time with the Red River Valley Water Supply, they talked about the legislative strategy. I won't belabor that, but that's obviously a big deal, and and we'll work with all of our partners throughout the state on that. The North Dakota Municipal Water Supply Grant and Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund, that's an important project because those are the funds that we use to fund the water treatment plant. And so over the last few sessions, the state has really focused in on funding, and Grand Forks should be really proud on how we got the, number one, we got the 50% funding on the, on the water plant, that was about 75 million, and the remaining 75 million, we use this infrastructure loan program. And so that's how the the water treatment plant was funded, and so we want to continue those programs, and we were one of the leaders to get the these buckets filled with money so that we can help partner on those things, so we want to encourage those to move forward. Right now, we have submitted, you've approved, and the drinking water lines that are going to go out to Highway 81 and serve Fufang, those, you know, those 12-inch lines, that's the program that we're going to get 60% grant funding, and we're also going to ask for a 40% loan program that the state's carrying. So these, these are the programs that really are meaningful to us as we move forward. The public safety, the Siren, and again, you should be very proud of, again, Grand Forks is leading, and this was a new radio system, and Grand Forks County and our PSAP, along with all of our first responders from police department, fire department, county, Grand Forks County was one of the leading agencies to move forward with Siren. Not only did we advocate on on its behalf, we were one of the first implementers of this, and we should be really proud. And I think Fire Chief Gary Lorenz, he should get a lot of credit because he testified at a moment of truth a couple sessions ago, and Representative Mark Sanford said he's the guy who got, made it understandable, and the reason why the state committed to that project. So when you think of Siren and all the great things that we're doing and the whole state's going to be doing, think of Gary Lorenz, because he served as, on a statewide basis and and helped everybody out. The other thing with, is PSAP, oh, I should say that, we're going to talk about public health a little bit later, and then this insurance premium tax, what we've worked on is for fire insurance, the state collects funds and then they they distribute it back to cities like Grand Forks for, to reimburse us for some fire protection for our fire department. What we're going to ask for this is, please reimburse us as much as possible, but it's been going session to session, so what we're asking is to make that as permanent as permanent gets, and so we're not having to ask for that every session, that they, we can start building that into our budgets. That's what that relates to. The North Dakota PERS and and benefits, right now, the state of North Dakota has an interim committee. We're part of the North Dakota Public Employee Retirement System. It is a, it's a hybrid, I would call it a hybrid defined benefit program, where this, the city of Grand Forks cost shares with that, with all employees, 8% the city picks up, the employee pays 7%. One of the challenges right now, the state has has an interim committee, they're looking at closing that plan, and so anybody in the plan will be protected, but moving forward, they're looking at moving the PERS plan to a defined contribution plan. And they're looking at doing it not only for state employees, but also for municipalities and counties that are part of that plan. Our concern with that defined contribution plan is that it's set up appropriately, it remained competitive, because right now, one of the, other than the health, health insurance that you guys have really helped support, this is one of the leading attractions that we can get people to come work for the city of Grand Forks, and then once you're in the plan, it really creates a retention where people want to commit to the Grand Forks and stay with us. But right now, there's some, there's some thoughts that the state's going to get out of it. The state's in a very good financial position, so when you close a retirement plan, you've got to, generally, you have to invest large sums of money to close the plan over time. And right now, the state of North Dakota has has large sums of money where they could, they could put it into this plan and then close it and then be able to fund it over time. So we're going to track that closely. The lead representative from the state of North Dakota Legislature was here during the League of Cities Conference, and it sounds like they're going to do everything they can probably to try to close this plan. They think it's going to be a better option for people in the future, but we really want to close this because we we are being challenged to hire employees, and we want to make sure we remain competitive. I think they're going to make it really hard for us not to be part of whatever plan they create, because they're going to hold us harmless when they put some cash into the plan. The, when Maureen and I were at the presentation at the League of Cities, they're going to try to hold us harmless. We're going to track this very closely because, just so you know, for our employees, it's near and dear to all of them. And for one thing, you know, we want to, this is about future employees, but for all of us to be successful, we've got to be able to attract more and more talent and have them stick around here as we move forward. I think they will protect the public safety employees, that would be police and fire to start with, because they're in a separate pension program in PERS, so this would be more for the rank-and-file in our organization. So more to come on that, but that's really important. The other thing with the, what we mean by the PSAP employees, including as first responders right now, I spoke of the public safety plan where our, our police officers and our firefighters can be part of that public safety retirement program, but PSAP operators are not able to be, because at the federal level, they're, they're defined as more of an administrative support or clerical role. And so what we're asking for is, in this case, if the federal government defines PSAP operators as first responders, that they would then be eligible as part of the North Dakota PERS plan to be a first responder, and they could go into this plan. And obviously, that, they're a critical part of the public safety team, along with police and fire, so we're really advocating on on that behalf. Under the community development economic, these are, you know, obviously, we've used tax incentives that are authorized by the state of North Dakota. We've, you you see several of those projects, we're just continuing, wanting to commit to that. This Career Impact Academy capital, right now, the state used ARPA funds, and so the the school district, I guess in this case, is still awaiting federal approval to move forward with that $10 million. So number one, they're asking for two things, is if, if the federal government doesn't allow the ARPA funds to be spent on this career education, for whatever reason, I can't imagine it happening, that the state would substitute that funds with their own money so that we can move forward with these centers. The other thing, because of inflation, construction inflation, all these several centers need additional funding under the 50/50 cost share, so we're asking for additional funds to be placed above and beyond on that. We had folks here from the EDC talk about the highly skilled workforce, so I won't belabor that, and then also the childcare, we want to continue to do that as a critical, important programs. The last one, our our general overview, is municipal government matters. Obviously, we want to create, protect our home role, and what we do locally, we think is best, and so we're going to continue to do that. The other thing that's come up is open records laws, and and the state of North Dakota is really focused on open records. We had one under the PSAP about what's open records under a a PSAP call and who's responsible. The other thing that's come up over the years is people in certain organizational professions, whether it be police, fire, some sort of public safety, is to try to protect even more people's addresses and phone numbers and those sorts of things. Those are the things that are being discussed right now at the state level, and we want to certainly track that because we have similar positions that the state of North Dakota has, so we're going to continue to track those various items. I would finally say, before asking Mr. Dulitz to come up, is our legis, we're going to meet, our legislate, we we do meet weekly during the session, and we take, on Fridays, we go through League of Cities Hall, so we're tracking things. Mr. Bernstein, John Bernstein is kind of our coordinator and making sure that we're tracking everything, and I think what you've heard over and over again each session from our legislators, they're very thankful of all that we do to track things, keep them in touch, and to provide them weekly updates about what our our thoughts are regarding the city council, and so they're very appreciative of what we do, and we'll try to do something equally as good or better this session, Mr. Sandy. So with that, we have a unique initiative, and this is a unique initiative that we've asked Mr. Dulitz to come here, but you have a public health to talk about behavioral health and a policy initiative for your further review and consideration.
Good evening, Mr. Dulitz. Welcome.
Council President Sandy and members of the, of the committee. I'm Michael Dulitz with Grand Forks Public Health. So I'm here to talk about the behavioral health component of the, of the council priorities. I have been working with council member Weber on the, on this priority as well, and we are in a relatively early stage of forming this together, but I think we have a good opportunity to discuss what we're looking for right now. Over the past interim, the state has had an acute psychiatric care committee, interim committee, that has been meeting, that I've been following very closely because of the substance use disorder-related topics that they've been following, as well as behavioral health. We, we know that, you know, behavioral health includes both mental health and and addiction, and so it was very important for us to keep an eye on this committee meeting. Out of the committee, a few important points came out of a couple reports that they've had. First, they commissioned a report called the Schulte Report. Some of the things that came out of that report were an interest in seeing more, you know, regionalization of of behavioral health beds to reduce individuals having to be sent to the state hospital, as well as better utilization of behavioral health beds, so acute care beds for individuals who are, need an acute level of care, so, you know, generally, short-term level of care. What we're hearing from our, you know, from our providers locally is that those, those bed counts are, you know, already overburdened, and so trying to move more people, you know, locally is not going to, the math is, just isn't going to work out, and they're going to be pushed further back in the system. That means long emergency departments stays, that means pushing people back out into the community, et cetera. The other thing that came up in this committee was the need for better billing of Medicaid for Medicaid-eligible services, things like our Human Service Center don't bill Medicaid for the services that they provide when they should be, to get a better cost share. Medicaid is a very hot topic, though, because Medicaid will not pay for an acute hospitalization for a psychiatric illness if they go to a hospital that has more than 16 psychiatric beds, you know, which is called the IMD exclusion, you know, and that's a pretty hard and fast exclusion. So if, if you have a place like Prairie St. John's in Fargo, that's a really good example, they have 100, over 100 beds, and so they, if they accept a client with Medicaid, they're essentially doing that as charity care. The state has made some progress in recent years on trying to expand out access to beds with, our places with less than 16 beds. That's how we have Share House in Grand Forks. They have less than 16 beds, so they can bill Medicaid for their, or at their location in Grand Forks, so there is some benefit there. And then finally, one of the other things that has kind of come up in this, in this committee meeting was discussion about what behavioral health care looks like in the community. You know, I talked just a minute ago about how people, you know, if we don't have acute, acute psychiatric hospitalization, people get pushed back to the ER, and then they get, end up back in the community without having their behavioral health challenges resolved. Likewise, you know, Northeast Human Service Center, for instance, they have a very defined population that they see, and they refer people back out to the community for services that they don't provide, because they have a finite, you know, number of resources. In addition, we've had a COVID-19 pandemic that I've talked to you guys many times about that had, you know, a definite impact on behavioral health as well, and so demand for behavioral health services in the community is at unprecedented levels, and we can't, we can't add enough capacity fast enough with the current system. So we did have, in this committee meeting, we did have representatives from our community, a nonprofit hospital entity from our community come and present to that acute psychiatric committee, asking for beds, asking for help with building beds in the community, acute care hospitalization beds, and we're looking to combine that with an interest in, in enhancing the availability of community-based services. Community-based services would be through a model called the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Model. That is a model that has been established in Polk County through a LUMA. You may have seen ads for them. That's been established in LUMA, through a LUMA, formerly the Northwestern Mental Health Center for a few years now. It has been a great solution for Polk County. This Certified Community Behavioral Health Center concept requires This Certified Community Behavioral Health Center concept requires that, you know, that this behavioral health clinic see a client within a defined period of time. So if you pick up the phone and call them, they have to see you within X number of days. I believe it's less than two weeks. They have to meet criteria on the types of services that they provide. So they have to provide substance use disorder services, which is where I come in at. You know, my interest comes in at, they have to provide, you know, crisis services. They have to provide medication services. They have to provide counseling. So they have a package of services that they have to provide. And they also have to see the people that come, you know, make it to their door. And so they, in exchange for being a CCBHC, they get enhanced Medicaid reimbursement for providing those services to anybody who does come in their door. Again, Polk County and Aluma, that was one of the first ones in the country. They have a great model. We went and visited them, very promising for the Grand Forks community. And so what we're looking to do and what the proposal for behavioral health is that we are working through is to combine and ask, you know, from a community entity for behavioral health beds with a combined ask to the state for support for establishing a certified community behavioral health clinic within the Grand Forks community, building off that success that we saw, you know, just across the river. And then, you know, basically having those services provided to anybody who comes in, but then shifting those services into the, you know, kind of that Medicaid, Medicaid expansion, private insurance realm. So this ask wouldn't have any direct impact on, you know, costs for the city or anything like that. We wouldn't be asking for anything specifically from the city. It's mostly just permission for us to, you know, to advocate for this, for this concept for the community. Because I know behavioral health has been a very common issue that's come up particularly on the campaign trail, I'm sure, you know, for our new council members. I did include in, in there, an email with some questions, answers to some questions, but other than that, I am open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dulitz. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Wosowski.
Hi. So I just want to make sure that I understand this. So you guys want to go and you want to ask for additional money for additional beds or for the nonprofit? Or I'm kind of confused about where the division was on that.
So Councilmember Wosowski, essentially we want to support the community or the, the interest of, of the hospital within the community to pursue additional beds and combine that with an ask for a, for a Certified Community Behavioral Health Center, you know, grant or something like that to help us with the establishment of that Certified Community Behavioral Health Center concept. To combine together with that, you know, to combine those two pieces together to ensure that, you know, we aren't just adding beds for the acute care or people that need acute care and forgetting about their needs in the community or needs as an outpatient and hopefully reducing that need for the people, or for individuals to be hospitalized.
Okay, so you're asking for state funding and then you're also like wanting to get another nonprofit into Grand Forks to help supply these?
No, that would be, it would be the same entity.
Okay. How many nonprofits do we have in Grand Forks that have these beds?
Essentially, it would be, you know, Ultra was the one who presented to the acute psychiatric committee. There is another nonprofit in the Grand Forks community that is interested in the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic concept as well, though.
So we have one, only Ultra provides?
No, there's two interested in the CCBHC concept. Alter is the one interested in the additional beds.
Okay.
And they have presented to that committee.
How many beds do we have in Grand Forks or even in the county to support these mental health problems that we have?
Don't quote me on this, but I believe it's right around 20 beds that is currently, you know, located at Ultra. We used to have more through Red River Behavioral Health System and they, they closed roughly in 2019, if I, if I remember correctly. So that did cut down the number of beds available locally.
Okay, so you said there were two and you just said Ultra had about 20. So what's the other nonprofit then that provides these beds and how many beds do they have?
They provide, or they provide, they currently provide community-based services to them. They don't, they don't have acute care psychiatric beds.
Okay, and then I also see that you're asking for additional funding for the school nurses program also?
I don't, I'm not specifically here to discuss the school nurses program. I'm here to discuss the behavioral health initiative, but I could certainly pass off to Debbie if you have more questions.
No, that's fine. So do you personally think that pushing lockdowns and the pandemic had to do with the rise in mental illness that now our city's seeing that we're going to need these new beds?
You're Councilmember Wosowski, there were a lot of mental health stresses that came along with the pandemic, you know, that all compounded into, you know, you know, having, you know, an increased need for mental health services in the community.
Okay, I just, I guess my one comment that I have is, you know, the Department of Health really pushed these lockdowns kind of the whole situation. And now we're asking for money to try to help fix some of these problems that were created because of those steps. So I guess that's kind of my comment.
And Councilmember Wosowski, what we, you know, a lot of these problems existed before the pandemic. They just got worse as, you know, through the pandemic, we, they were even more highlighted. So, you know, these are things that we've been working on for, for years and now, you know, they're, they're still, you know, continuing to come to a head.
Okay.
Mr. Weber, you want to wrap it up for us?
I'll try. Long before any of us, long before I'd heard of COVID, the state legislature had commissioned a study to look at the state's behavioral and mental health services and resources. The first line of that study, and this was commissioned by the state legislature, the first line of that study is the North Dakota Mental Health and Substance Abuse System is in crisis. This existed well before the pandemic. Part of my frustration has been we often look to the county to provide human services or to the state to, to provide some help, but it's the city that often suffers the ill effects of this most directly. For instance, Chief Nelson, when I've gone on ride-alongs with, with your officers, it's not uncommon to spend many hours of a shift, often dealing with just one or two individuals who shouldn't be served by law enforcement. They should be served by behavioral and mental health services. So this isn't just looking for money. This is an effort to conserve city resources and to improve the quality of life for, for our citizens. And the money, as I understand it, would be some state funds, but largely this is Medicaid funding, special Medicaid waivers who would, that would help, be used to help support these behavioral health services. And so that's, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. So Mr. Dulitz, you, are you looking for any sort of affirmation from us that we think it's a good idea that you go ask the state or are you just telling us that you're going to go do it or what's, what's the plan?
Council President Sandy, I came to you just to make sure that you're well aware that we were looking to pursue this as part of our legislative priorities.
In fact, President Sandy, if I may, the, essentially the list of priorities that we, that have been presented this evening are pretty much identical with some modest updates to the current set of legislative priorities that have already been approved by council. Mr. Dulitz's discussion tonight about Certified Community Behavioral Health Centers is one addition to that. The other addition is the concern about open records. Otherwise, we'd be looking to approve the, to continue approval of the current list of priorities with these two additions.
Certainly.
Wasn't that Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Weigl.
Just real quickly, I appreciate what Mr. Weber said or Vice President Weber said about law enforcement dealing with mental health issues and that can be difficult to do. But the one thing that law enforcement does have to deal with is violent crime. And as I looked over the Grand Forks Police Department's 2021 annual report, they did mention in there that there was a, what a 10 and a half percent increase in violent crime over the past two years. I know Attorney General Drew Wrigley has talked about a package of laws that he hopes will address some of the violent crimes, especially offenders that use firearms. And I would hope that we could maybe add that to the list of public safety priorities. I, I don't think that violent crime is going to go down anytime soon. I think it's going to continue. And I would hope that the city of Grand Forks would assist the Attorney General's support of holding these offenders accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. Mr. Weber, I think we probably, this is the first I've heard of this and Attorney General's priorities. I would assume that we would watch as, I don't know if Mr. Weigl, does he have anything in writing already for us to discuss or is he going to be bringing it forward about the time the session starts and then we can watch and think about it and talk about it at that point?
I haven't seen anything specific come through yet. I know he's done a couple of different interviews that talk about some of his legislative priorities going in. And so I'd be fine with that, but like I said, I do think it's important, especially for our community and we have seen a 10 and a half percent increase in violent crime in the city of Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. I wholeheartedly agree. So yes, Mr. Veen?
So we're, the whole list is up for discussion, right? Besides just what Mr. Dulitz, just a couple of quick things. Todd, the infrastructure revolving loan fund, that's, that's still 40-year, 2%. Is that right? Is that what that one is?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Veen, I think for cities, it's up to 30 years, but with the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, I think they allowed that to go to 40 years. And so there's a 30-year max and there's a 40-year max. And right now, the user, well, I guess we're calling a user fee for the Red River Valley. That was a, you guys accepted a 2%, 40-year, but I think some of the projects like we have, the transportation, some of the water related, I think we can only go up to 30 years.
But they're still 2%. They're still at 2%. I think that's amazing.
It's amazing right now.
Rate to have and to continue, I think, taking full advantages of that, even going beyond the additional 25 million you said we have potential for?
Right now, we have, we have that 25 million. We did, we haven't spent any of that these, these last two years. And so we're going to hold that in obance until we have the right project or projects to use that.
Can that potentially even go up this next session more too? Would be one way to help preserve that or?
I think it would be great because, you know, it was at 15 million, they moved it to 40 per our request. And if they can, you know, increase it even further. And the great thing about those loans, those loans is they don't have a lot of the federal strings attached to it. And so we really want to preserve those for important projects that we want, that fit in.
Okay, okay. The, the second comment I wanted to make was on the transportation, infrastructure and transportation funding. The, I was hoping and wanting to see the intercity bridge on the list. It was two years ago. It's taken off now. It's a part of our long-range transportation plan. And so it seems to me, and I'd like to have a little discussion here now, especially before maybe final council action, but that we talk about keeping that on our list. And I'm maybe initially trying to understand why it was taken off and we would have the ability to have further discussion on that.
Council President Sandy, I think in the past, we've, we've had the intercity, we've, or at least debated the intercity and the Merrifield Bridge. And one of the reasons why the Merrifield Bridge is that's a county-led project, certainly as part of Team Grand Forks, we're going to support it, but we're not going to be the lead agency on that. And y'all have to blame me, I didn't know if the intercity bridge was ripe yet. The other thing we've gotten criticism from the North Dakota DOT is, you know, what, what is Grand Forks's priorities? And so we always say we have this one A and one B priority, whatever works between those two. And so I've been, I, I am reticent on putting too much on the list just because we've gotten the lecture about what our priorities are.
I just see, it, it was two years ago. I, I do agree A and B are, are priorities. I just think that the intercity bridge is and continues to be a priority. I know we haven't moved that forward. It's under, you know, the consultant is in the process of being hired or being hired about how to shepherd that through. But I would like to see that added to this, to this list. And maybe we could have other discussion on it.
I think when we discussed, there wasn't a differentiation between the intercity bridge versus the Merrifield Road Bridge. And so I think if you want to put both bridges on, I'm happy to, I'm happy to go along with that.
The, the long-range transportation plan compared all those and the, and the project that was approved to be more forward with the city. I, I mean, that may be under the Team Grand Forks priorities, no question about it, but the city priority is the intercity bridge. It's been approved by the city council of both communities and it's been approved by the MPO. And we've done-
And we can, we can debate the intercity bridge. If you want to debate the intercity bridge tonight, Ken, I'm happy to do that. I think there's been a lot of discussion about the intercity bridge over a certain amount of time. I'll go back to Earl Houghan telling everybody that the necessity for the specific location of the intercity bridge in the long-range transportation plan, and we can go back and find the video, but he specifically said it was simply a placeholder. And so then it was added to the long-range transportation plan. And then somehow he came back and said, no, we've decided that that's where the bridge is going to go. And then it became codified as apparently law. And so I for one, still don't believe that the, the decision on where the intercity bridge should go has been decided. I also don't, don't think that, again, this is just my opinion, I don't think we have made the determination whether an intercity bridge is more important than a bridge on Merrifield Road. I know, I certainly think that the bridge on Merrifield Road is much more important for the county and therefore for the city of Grand Forks. But that, again, is just my opinion. So if others want to, want to weigh in, I'm happy to have further discussion. Yes, Ms. Lott.
I would love to see the intercity bridge added on as a priority. I think we've been discussing it. I think we need to discuss it more. As the MPO is hiring a consultant to find out which is the best location, I think that makes it a priority.
Great. Any others? Mr. Weber?
I don't remember the, the night, but I, I do believe that this council, a previous council, may, had an explicit vote about a priority for the bridge. And I, tonight is just Cal making recommendation to council. I'd like a chance to look into that a little more deeply, see if we can come back with some additional information on November 7th, when council will be giving a final approval to this list.
Mr. Weigl, comments?
I, I would just say, I think we've, couple legislative sessions, we've gone in with multiple priorities. And in my opinion, like I said, this is solely my opinion, if we go in with priority after priority, and you've got three priorities on a list, to me, they get watered down and they lose some of that, some of that glow. I'd be in favor of having one large infrastructure priority, which is the 42nd Street overpass or underpass and call it a day and really throw all our eggs in one basket and try to get this thing done.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl.
And, and that priority would be the interchange rather than the grade separation?
No, he said the 42nd Street grade separation.
The, the grade separation, all right. So it seems like here we're talking about a matter of strategy.
I would agree. Mr. Veen?
No, I, first of all, I wanted to make sure we have the discussion. I do see it different than you, Mr. Sandy. I don't recall us putting a place, this as a placeholder because you voted against it in city council, right?
I did not vote against it when it went in the previous, I voted against it on the, the current long-range transportation plan. The previous long-range transportation plan was when Mr. Houghan said it was simply a placeholder. So I voted for it then, yes. I voted against it for our current long-range transportation.
Right, yeah.
So here's, here's my idea. These are just purely recommendations that we're going to move to the committee or to the city council meeting at November 7th, correct? Or are they coming back next?
No, November 7th. We got five Mondays, so we'll take next Monday off.
So-
Happy Halloween.
How about we just push this one as it is and we can have further discussion at the following, at the, November 7th? Does that, anybody care? If you want to make a motion, Mr. Veen, you're welcome to make a motion. Same with you, Mr. Weigle, whichever you'd prefer.
I'll make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation at this point and then we can have this discussion again on November 7th.
Okay, there's a motion by Weigle. Is there a second? Second by Osowski? Further comment?
No, I can amend that motion.
You certainly can amend that motion.
So I would amend the motion to add the intercity bridge. For the recommendation to go to council.
Motion to add the intercity bridge? Is there a second? There's a second by, there's a motion by Veen, second by Lonsky. So, any comments related to the amendment?
I have a question, Mr. Sandy.
Yes, Mr. Weigle.
Mr. Veen, correct me if I'm wrong, so we would add this as another thing, so we technically have three transportation projects listed on this document.
That would be correct. That would be the same as we had last two years ago.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. Motion ties, and therefore it fails. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Further discussion November 7th. Item 2.7, Department Head Classification Matter. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy and members of the committee whole. Ms. Bobad is not here with me this evening, she couldn't make it, she got, fell ill, so I'm going to carry this one forward. This department head classification matter, we had it before you last year, as you recall, and it was not voted to move forward with, with the ordinance modification that Mr. Gostad drafted up. It was a 4-3 vote against moving forward. But again, it's a new year and we have two department heads that are now vacant or will be vacant and we want to move forward. We have been blessed with, well, we're blessed with great city employees that do great things and we're also blessed with really terrific department heads. And over the last couple of years, we've, we have replaced four department heads as department heads as non-classified contracted employees. And so they're at-will employees with some benefits as part of their agreements. Most of the employees for the City of Grand Forks, you know, the 500-plus employees that work for the City of Grand Forks are classified employees. And so when I talk about classified civil service, they're classified and they're part of the civil service system. So there's a whole chapter in our city code that defines all the various aspects of the civil service system, you know, how to hire, how to fire, how to discipline, you know, rules, regulations. Those are all prescribed by, through that code. But then there's, department heads are generally, over the last few years, have been moved towards unclassified contracted employees. And so because I've been around here for 20-plus years, I was a, when I was Public Works Director, under the early term of Mayor Brown, I was, Mayor Brown wanted to move employees from, when he started and got elected first in 2000, to move department heads to contracted, unclassified positions. And so I think for about 10 years, department heads, and when you look at this, one of the attachments, we went to a swing of having department heads that were unclassified and contracted. And then in the latter half of his tenure, from around plus or minus 2010 to 2020, we started then transferring back to the civil service classified positions. And so under Mayor Brown, we've got a little bit of a mix and match. Mayor Bochenski came into office and as part of being the CEO of the City of Grand Forks, he wanted to go back to the unclassified department heads that would be contracted. So over the last two years, we've been fortunate to hire four really terrific department heads. One, Brian Brooks as city planner, Brandon Basfley at building inspections director, Sharon Lips as our public works operations director, and then Shannon LaHayes, most recently, as our public safety answering point director. All four of those positions have been as non-classified contracted employees as we move forward. What we're asking for is that, we intend to start advertising and we may be already advertising these positions, and we're going to advertise them both ways, that this position may be unclassified contracted or it may be classified so we can, but we're going to start moving forward with the process of getting our advertisements out there so we can start getting some applicants and start the process regardless. But we thought this was another opportunity where we could go back to the code and do some cleanup, because right now, for whatever reason, back in the day, we specified all the various department head positions in the City of Grand Forks. And over time, those positions are outdated, they're incomplete. And so with this change and what we're asking for as part of the, of the city ordinance modification, it would remove the names and would give us more flexibility. And so we wouldn't have to go back and if we change positions, because oftentimes with management changes or it's just styles, positions have changed and would give us some flexibility. Ultimately, the city council is in charge at the end of the day of how we want to move forward and we certainly make recommendations to you. So with that, I would ask Dan Gostad, just to briefly go through that, that ordinance and the modifications.
Sure. And it's part of the attachment. What I'll do is, is just go through, it's really sections two and three that are cleaning up, removing, you know, specified languages to who is, what's a department and what's a department head, making it a little bit more flexible rather than delineating each and every department and each and every department head. Because as Mr. Phelan pointed out, some of these delineated departments and department heads don't exist or the names have changed and things like that. So that's what sections two and three are intended to do. Sections one and four become, work together in that what they do is, is they would list that, section four lists that all department heads that are defined, now defined broadly, would be in the non-classified status. With the exception of those department heads that are currently classified, they would retain their classification until their employment ends or they are terminated under the classification process. And then that dovetails into section one, which speaks of removal of appointed officials. It makes it clear as that an appointed official and a department head would fall within this particular ordinance, which requires that if the mayor removes a department head or appointed official, the mayor has to provide a reason to the, or to this council with the, not less than five days or 15 days after that decision is made, also has to file that report with the city auditors. If the mayor doesn't provide that report or doesn't file it, that department head retains their, his or her position. Or if the city council will vote by majority to basically overturn the mayor's decision, then that department head would retain their position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but sections two and three really kind of clean things up. And it's sections one and two that work together with respect to the classified versus non-classified positions for department heads.
Thank you, Mr. Gostad. Ms. Osowski, yes?
It says here that the non-classified positions shall include all elected officials. Does that mean that he can just remove us?
No, that means, no. I don't think an elected official can be voted off.
It says, it says in the document that the non-classified positions shall include the all-elected officials.
That means you're not protected by the civil service.
That's what that has to do. Okay, so he can't remove us then?
The mayor can't kick somebody out of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
This is a shift in kind of administrative policy that came with Mayor Bochenski. A mayor that I've come to have great respect for. But I have long expressed concerns about this. My main concern being an interest in avoiding political pressure on department heads. One question I have is, do we have any sense, recruitment is so important to us, and that's what we're talking about right now, it's one of the things we're talking about. Do we have any sense or any data on the impact of one or the other on recruitment?
Council President Sandy and Council Vice President Weber. I'll give you a sense, I don't have any statistical. I would say those that we've hired from outside the City of Grand Forks, that weren't already an employee of the City of Grand Forks, I think those employees, when I've gotten personal feedback when we've hired them, between that classified civil service versus unclassified contracted, there hasn't been a big difference. I think the one thing people from the outside have appreciated, when you become a non-classified contracted employee, department head, is that you have more flexibility. Flexibility with what you can negotiate as part of your agreement. And there's less flexibility in the classified service. I would say those that have risen up in the organization, that, we'll give the assessing example. So if you were a deputy city assessor or if you were a senior city assessor and you were thinking about, you know, applying for that city assessor position that Mr. Hodak is going to retire from, I think that's where you get more reticence, where I, you know, I've been in a city employment for, you know, several years, I've worked my way up in the organization. There is some reticence with that, because, you know, they, there, they'd rather kind of stay a classified employee, get that next promotion as department head. I think that's where you, you have more of the concern from employees that are from within. Those that are from without the organization, generally, it doesn't make a difference to them. And sometimes they actually appreciate being a contract, because they can then negotiate with the, with the mayor, with city council approval and some of their various benefits and pay and that sort of thing.
Thanks. That's, that's a really balanced and useful answer. Overall, I'm taking away from that, when we try to fill these positions, and I think we always conduct a national search, there's some benefit to doing, to going with the contract position, because they see the flexibility. On the other hand, if we prize supporting growth from within, it's maybe a little bit of a detriment. And then one of my main concerns all along, and again, it's not about the current administration, it's about, really about safeguarding against a problematic future administration, is this issue of termination. And you've spoken to that with section one. Can you just walk me through that one more time? If the, if a mayor chooses to terminate a contract of a department head, once the mayor makes that determination to terminate, then, then there's a time period to inform council or is council informed before the termination?
It may be both, but there is a requirement that the mayor, after the removal of the appointed official or the department head, that he then is obligated to provide a report to the city council as to the reasons for that, for his or her decision. The mayor also has to provide a written report that has to be filed with the auditor outlining those very same reasons. If, and so there's two ways then that that department head can be reinstated. One is if the mayor doesn't follow that procedure within that five or 10 or 15-day period of time. Or alternatively, if the council receives those reasons and then votes to basically overturn or unwind that decision, then that, then the department head would be placed back into the position again.
Pretty nasty to get fired and then have the council come back and say, no, you shouldn't be fired. And then that individual has to continue working under a boss that wanted them fired. Yeah. But let's contrast that with, what is the process for termination with a classified employee then?
It's outlined in the memo and there is a reviewing, and the mayor is involved in that termination decision as well. So you basically have kind of the same scenario, with the exception that instead of the council making the decision, it's the civil service commission that could not approve that sanction or that discipline.
Rather than the council, a politically elected body, the civil service commission would make that decision.
They have, they can make those decisions with respect to any of the discipline that's being imposed upon an employee.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Any comments, Mr. Veen?
Just to follow up with what Mr. Weber said, it's probably the issue, I'd probably softened a little bit versus contract versus, versus civil service position, because I think there's benefits to both. Each, each one has certain value and I'm not for sure that there's a perfect one. What's, for me problematic here is the politic, how can we take the politics out of this process is really what it boils down to. I know there's advantages sometimes to hiring, but you want to make sure that the hiring process also is transparent and open, you know, so that nobody is hiring the person unduly or unfairly. The biggest issue for me is on the firing. It's making sure that we try to keep that political influence out of there. And I know they talk about, here the council would get into that. What I liked, what we talked about earlier was the special assessment had as a citizen committee. It's not political. I think with, especially with the firing process of a department head, and a department head is so visible and out there, unlike some of the other employees, I think they really need that protection. And what I liked about the civil service system is there was a three-member independent committee that looked at that. Be honest with you, the mayor could still fire under any circumstance, right? But you could appeal to the commission, to the civil service, or, this, yeah, the civil service system. So that's what I, I wish we could figure out a way to improve what's here, to have a little more protection than what we, what's currently being proposed. That's, that's probably my dilemma. I don't, I don't quite agree with how this is currently worded.
President Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weigle. Mr. Weigle, yeah.
Mr. Gostad, is the civil service commission, is that currently appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council?
I believe that to be correct, but I don't know, I think that's, I don't know the appointment process for the civil, but I believe that you're accurate.
I think you're accurate. And I think it's a, I think it's a five-member board.
It's a five.
And I think in the code, it specifies there's certain, like an HR representative, a union representative, there's a kind of a prescribed individuals to make up the board. So it's, it's kind of got a cross-section of the community that's represented.
So with that being said, not saying, I'm the current mayor or any mayor in the future, but essentially, couldn't they appoint five people that politically align with them and have four council members that politically align with them? And then we've got a politicized civil service commission? And maybe that's a rhetorical question, but I could see that the argument against it is because we don't want to make it political, but I think the civil service commission could become political, just like the city council is.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Further comments? I think Mr. Weigle, Mr. Kavami and I spent significant time advocating for approving this concept. When was that, last year? And of course, we lost the vote, but the, you know, in my mind, the reasons for going to contract management hasn't, hasn't changed. I think the mayor, not only is it his philosophy, and I think we, you know, it is his administration and there is something to be said for, you know, providing a system whereas the mayor feels the most confident to manage his employees. I also think that, you know, we are, as Mr. Weber pointed out, we are competing for employees regionally. I think if, you know, to Mr. Phelan's point, in the last few years, we've, we've managed to not only attract applicants, I think we've added three or four of really, really good managers to our team. And when asked- really good managers to our team, and when asked, none of them seem to complain about the contract, the contract protections that they would get under the contract versus the civil service. So, I for one still think that we should, we should move to a contract, concept, and so I, I like the way Mr. Gostad worded this. Again, my opinion. Mr. Veen, further?
Yeah, just further. I'm not disagreeing with a lot with what you've just stated. I think there's some benefit. I just have a problem with, with this one, one piece of it yet, and I got, I'm having trouble getting over that.
Further comments?
Mr. Veen?
Yeah, Mr. Weigle?
Mr. Veen, is there, is there something you'd like to change in that, that would make you more comfortable with it? Or is that something you can bring back next Monday?
Yeah, I've, I've thought about it. I don't know what the answer is. That's part of my problem, or I would present it as an amendment. I just would like to see a search for some other way to do that. Mr. Gostad, maybe you've got some ideas that would accomplish that?
Mr. Gostad? You gotta be mindful that this is not the first reading. This is just a recommendation, so you've got actually two weeks to think about, Mr. Veen, your council member Veen, about what you may want to insert, and I'd be more than happy to answer. Give me a call, and we can certainly go through what, what some of your thought processes are, and present that at the first reading, which would be November 7th then.
And, and that I would appreciate, if you could do some research, maybe what others have done, if there's something different, that would really be helpful, because you've got the contacts to do that.
Council President Sandy, we all, we've all worked here for the City of Grand Forks, and for the most time, they've been good times with our political leaders, right? And so we do understand the stress and the strain, but we have been so fortunate with the mayors that we've had, and with the city councils that we've had, and the support. And I think what Mr. Gostad was trying to do is, before, before a mayor makes a decision, certainly we're in the advisement place, is that we advise, you know, you gotta have a good story, whether it's going to civil service, which is a, which is a public meeting, or whether it's a Monday evening like this to a city council, is that we have to have good reasons, and if we don't have a good story, you know, it's, it's something that really is gonna be hard to move forward with. And so I think most mayors and most have understood that, and they do really, to be frank, when you become mayor, you do really appreciate city employees and, and some of the stresses and strain. And we've been fortunate to have political leaders that have understood that, and support, supportive city council members too at the same. So it is serious business, and I think both are gonna be public bodies, both are gonna be well-vetted, and are gonna be open to the public, and we're gonna have to have the facts, no matter what decisions are made. But maybe there's some sort of hybrid that Mr. Gostad can think about. In the meantime, we will plan to move forward with both the public health director process and also the city assessor process, and I think what we'll do is that we'll just say it could be either or, just so that anyone who applies, it's more to come, but we'll try to, we'll try to frame it in that direction, because we likely won't have a decision till sometime in November. And I think Mr. Hodak, I almost forgot your name already, Paul, is, he's going to be wrapping up his, his tenure kind of in that November-December timeframe, and certainly we can do interim appointments administratively to create a department head, and I think Ms. Swanson, she's going to, she's going to retire in January. So we've got a little bit of time, but we'll start moving down that process in advance of final approval here.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Yes, Mr. Weber?
Friends make lousy contracts. They just trust one another, and it's all gonna be fine. So, my concern here is, again, not with the current administration, it's that there might be future problems. But for tonight, just recommend moving forward with this discussion at November 7th.
Thanks. There's a motion by Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Weigle. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.8, update from the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks MPO related to 2045 transportation plan. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, the MPO, they're, they're off at a conference in St. Paul, so they couldn't be here, but I know we have two MPO representatives, and Ms. Lunskey and, and Mr. Veen, and there was discussion, you raised concerns, and I know there was an MPO, so we put this on there. I know there was approval, and I think it surrounded the roundabout and potent, potential concerns that that may impact location of the inner-city bridge. And there was a discussion that was had, they did move, the board did move it forward unanimously, and, and from what I understand, it wasn't tied to the bridge itself, but I'd hand it over to our two council members that were on the board, so that, that's why we put it on this evening.
Ms. Lunskey or Mr. Veen? Comments?
Yeah, I wasn't at the meeting when this was actually presented and approved, but I did ask for the follow-up at the meeting we just had to try to understand. I reached out to Mr. Sandy, but late, and we didn't get a chance to hear from you before the meeting, and we just talked today, I guess, about, about where it's at. What I understand is the City of East Grand Forks wanted to move the, the issue from a near-term or short-term to a midterm project, and that the mayor, I believe, came to the MPO and requested that, and the MPO board unanimously approved the transition of that. It was not a capacity issue, it was about how to improve traffic flow, if I remember it. And so you could use signal lights, you could use a four-way stop, you could do, in this case, a roundabout. And I think the idea was, the roundabout was the preferred alternative, and the city then, the city internally requested that this be allowed to be transitioned to a midterm project. That came to the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the two Minnesota Planning and, or City, East Grand Forks Planning and Zoning Commission members approved it, as did the entire MPO board, executive board. Has that summarized it fairly clearly? Tricia?
Yes, I, I think you did a good job.
And so, I will just speak for myself, even though I didn't vote for the first one, because I wasn't there. We typically work with the opposing side, this case, the City of East Grand Forks made the request, and we supported it. Didn't, didn't really see the influence on Grand Forks, and I think technically, it didn't have to go through, and this is where some of the staff would be able to help. Technically, we didn't have to bring that back, because it was not considered a significant change. Is that the way you would, you would see that?
I think a significant or major change, where it required both cities.
It was not a major, and, and so that's the reason why it happened.
Any idea why, for anyone that wants to answer, any idea why it, it was such a big priority four years ago, that they went out and got a whole bunch of money so that they could pay and do it? And then, out of the blue, not only did they, did the mayor veto the actual construction of the project when its council voted to support it, why then he would now go to the MPO and have it moved in the long-range transportation plan to a, if he's not gonna support it, what's the point of having it on the transportation plan at all?
That's a political item from the mayor I can't answer.
I think, I think it would be great if Mayor Gander would want to show up and, and explain himself to the citizens of Grand Forks, whom he's trying to work over to get an inner-city bridge and a location that he wants, rather than, in my opinion, what best benefits both of our communities, and he is going out of his way, not supporting projects that would help alleviate traffic in his own community. I don't understand it. But again, that's just my reading the tea leaves. Anyway, thanks, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Veen? Ms. Lunskey, appreciate it. Anything else for the good of the order? Anyone have any, there's some move to adjourn by South?
President Sandy? If I may make one comment, please, as far as something that has come to light just today.
Sorry, there is no open public discussion.
There, there is something.
Ms. Veen? Miss, I'm, I'm having.
There's something from the FBI that has.
I'm sorry.
Has come out.
I'm sorry. Please take your seat. I am sorry. Please take your seat.
You serve the citizens.
I do serve the citizens. Mr. Veen, we are still having a discussion of our meeting right now.
We would like you to watch the video.
We have not adjourned the meeting. We are still having discussion of our meeting.
That has to do with CCP espionage and people being arrested, because I think that this committee, being that you discuss things that go before the city council.
Mr. Sandy, you've got a procedure that's.
That I think that you need to have the discuss, I think that you need to have the discussion on that.
Ms. Carlson, I am going to ask you to be.
In order that we can bring it to the city council.
Please.
Did you just hear what I said? I, I wish this committee could discuss it, so you can bring it to the city council.
Thank you for coming here.
Because that is, that's the next meeting.
Ms. Wosowski's motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
You really work for the citizens of the Grand Forks.